See their new mechanic starts to.
What they got another one? Yeah. Finally. Who's that?
Somebody from Roos's again, I think.
From, oh Roos's?
That's where I heard.
I know a young kid that works there too, I never thought about getting on his rear end about applying.
I'm not proud of it, it was him, they were talking.
Yeah. Well, I don't think it. I don't know, the problem is. That's that big money that we shot, I mean thirty, I know they're still down, but thirty percent is. Ego'd raised, but, I don't know. Apparently Cat and John Deere and all these places are paying. Looking bucks, I guess, I don't know. I just, I guess. Not as far mechanic, but all the other part, I just missed that. That bidding, there's no bidding anymore. You know, that we're so low on apps and everything, people are going right into the, a job.
Yeah.
Which sucks, I don't. I don't know why I wanted to get away from that. I mean, that's some incentive, incentive for people to work too.
And stay a little longer.
Yeah, you know, and it's just. That shop are getting really closed.
When are they gonna do that, uh, quick concrete?
You know, I asked. Yeah, I just, I asked Pat that day, and he, I don't know. When you were gonna, they gotta fix that cement up there, they got some bad cement.
You're gonna see the, they put some steel ones in.
Steel around there, yeah. Had a good meeting the other day, had all the people involved and Jeff, I think Jeff helped, I mean, that was Jeff's idea from Matt's.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, he's a great guy, I've known him for a long time. He was just a beginner when. We were, I was working for Ed, he was cement truck driver.
He was just in one area, wasn't he?
Yeah. So, that came up with a pretty good idea and. Decided how to pay for it or get it taken care of and let's get it done, you know. That's what, and that's what Garland wanted, you know, that, let's get this.
They're gonna do it before they get in there.
Yeah. Well, that's what the con- concrete guy was worried about, you know, we couldn't get any really warranty, you know, guarantees. I never thought about that aspect of, um, the difference between a product warranty and the warranty from the contractor, you know, I mean, that's. And he said, man, I don't wanna get in here and, you know, you guys have a five year or ten year or whatever warranty and you got all your shelves in here and everything, we gotta come in and grind and this and that. Which I never thought of, I, I could see that. We kinda worked around that too. I volunteered the road department. So let's hope it never happens. Jeff seemed pretty.
Confident.
Confident.
He used to work the concrete, was a problem.
Uh, ice, I don't know.
Was that too long?
No, I think it was weather. I, I guess I've never re- in all my experience, I never had an indoor/outdoor. Concrete. And they kept saying it was for indoor floors and I. Okay, you know, but then they, they leave a couple things out of it. When they batch it, so it was supposed to be indoor and it wasn't.
Does it rain in your car?
Yeah. And then it was, uh, the season they had to put tarps on it and. I, even if it was raining in that period of time and I remember one day coming to work, it was, um. There was ice on the, on the tarps that they covered with and everything, I mean, it's an iffy time anyway, but. I don't know. It almost looked like to me that the top cream just, it's not, they weren't very deep. They were just like pit, I mean, they're about, a lot of so, you know. I don't know, it's just almost like the, whatever caused it, the, the, um, finishing. Part of it, so only the finish part came off. Some, I don't know, it was like the trowel machine, you know.
Yeah, I understand that. Well, concrete, you think they, they're grinding.
Yeah.
So they're gonna do. Coating or something?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so. But, uh, I went a couple weeks ago through a. Patrick was on one of his engines, you know, he's. He was pointing out everything that was ridiculous, but. And I had to agree with him, I mean, I don't know how that shit got by. That storm shelter is ridiculous. They got like bomb, fricking bomb doors on the, they can shut the. To cover the windows. I mean, those things gotta be high dollar.
They're heavy.
Then they had that, cause they, they didn't need them, cause they had that room that is this. Block filled with a, every cell filled, eight inch of the concrete up top, they didn't need the, you know, hey, the storm's coming, you can walk from here to that door and go into this, that room. I don't know, that was. Hi Laura.
Good morning, everybody. Morning, good morning. Streets and break room.
Is there?
Oh.
I broke my zipper in my fire suit Friday night, I don't find, I don't know if I need.
I'm sure it's cause it was an old zipper, huh?
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Sizes change.
Yeah. It was kinda, it was kinda disheartening.
Oh, no.
Laura, how's your brother?
Uh, he's doing okay, I'm gonna go back tomorrow, he's, um. To the point now where the treatments really aren't doing. Much so that he's joined a clinical trial at the U of I. And so he started that last week, but he's having some complications, so. He's supposed to get another treatment, he got a sixth of a dose last week, but he's had some side effects, nothing major, but enough to keep him from getting the next. So today he's supposed to get one third of that dose. And they'll watch him again, hopefully he won't have them, and then he gets the rest of the dose supposedly Wednesday.
They just, you know, space it out.
Yeah, so they don't give him, I guess it's kinda shocking to get the whole dose.
Oh, I can't imagine.
And after that, we'll get it once a week. And then if his numbers improve, then it'll be once a month. But he's still in the hos- we thought he'd be home by Friday, but he's still there, so I've got two other brothers, so we've all been taking turns. So I will be there tomorrow afternoon.
Hopefully things will go.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he's. He's okay, he's talk- he can talk and walk and everything, but he's having some issues, but. So he's hanging in there, but I think we're to the, he's to the point now where your short treatments aren't.
Figured it would. Sorry.
Yeah, but hopefully, hopefully this'll work and he'll live another five or six years, so.
Well, you're right, so all you can do is just hope.
Yep, that's right, that's right.
And you watch out of a person's hands, you just have to trust.
Yep.
Put your hand in it.
Yep.
Morning Dan.
Good morning.
Looks like you've been out the sunshine.
Yeah.
Dan, doesn't he?
Yeah, about every day.
Yes, sir. I see on the carrying bridge Nancy put something on that Jim's birthday is the eighteenth of December.
Oh, is it?
So just hoping people bombard you with cards.
Yes, I have a birthday card, yes.
There's something special about August birthdays, I'll just say. Kinda like, it reminded me of like a big, um, you know, the. Getting that he's, he's got. Which is his, his feeling back.
You seem right, a little.
Like a Big Will.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
For him.
Yeah.
What a way to spend your retirement years.
Yeah, it's a long road for him, that's for sure.
Kurt, do you know how come ditches don't get sprayed anymore for that noxious weed, Queen Anne's lace and thistles and all the rest of that garbage?
They should be getting, they should be getting it.
They're, they're not getting sprayed at all, why is that?
For thistles.
This is, well, wild carrots in the top five.
Wild what?
When you guys send letters out, it's on there.
What, wild what?
Wild carrot, it's Queen Anne's lace, that type of white crap that nothing eats, and everybody's allergic to it.
Well, I tell you, you gotta drive her right in front of you, get on his rear end and ask him.
Is he a sprayer, does he do the spraying?
Yeah.
Excuse me, um, Tom.
You're welcome, Tom.
All their spraying, first thistles.
Well, that's quite helpful.
I know the Canadians are just, they're tough to get.
Oh, yeah, I just didn't bring him over, thank you, I just needed reminding.
Well, but still, how do I find out the answer to that question, why, why don't ditches get sprayed?
Well, they really, they are.
Why, why?
Why have you, Ken?
Well, I asked. Ben?
You know Lloyd, when he was here.
Lloyd, is that a long, that sounded like a name from a long time ago. When I first started, I spent my second year on the weed deal and, well, actually no, they just started it, Bob Gumber just started it. That's when bull thistles were ten foot tall.
Yeah, I remember that.
Those things were out of control. And we got those bucked down pretty quick, and those Canadians, they're.
They're hard.
They're tough.
Well, so to ask my question, if we just, if we look for our areas.
That's what they usually do, they have two trucks, right? We have two trucks and they take areas, you, we can't cover the whole county every year, can we? Yeah, they just do it by area.
So I just do that offering fifty dollars, can you cover my area for half an hour? Is that how it works?
Well, you'd have to go through your supervisor first.
Why?
So the supervisor needs some of that fifty bucks.
But that's not enough.
Laura already married.
Yes, I'm not gonna do it.
Well, ours is, okay, well. You know what it is now.
Oh, yeah.
It's not as bad, it doesn't spread as fast, and it is not as invasive, that's why. While the carrot comes in, comes up a huge, huge.
You got that, didn't you Dan?
Yes.
I like that. Even for a bridge, that's gotta be way bigger.
That horse, well, those three quarters, yeah, they'll last forever.
Is it a neat person? No. It's good gradually, yeah.
Well, that's a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it would go that up. You know, it would go above them, yeah. But that you live through. They don't help. They don't help there. I know.
So Kurt, have you, have you seen the Lego Ninjago, they've got a character named Lloyd.
Do they?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
La Lloyd. So a lot of kids are like, you know, they know the name now. They know how to spell it.
Weed went out, it was hot down at the bottom, but I tell you that's, it was snowing out there. There were people that were buying, and they had no idea, and so they were, they were cold. Yeah, yeah.
Where would you go, Richard?
Colorado.
Brrr, is it supposed to be?
Did you raise up it?
I, I don't wanna go back up.
You don't wanna go back up?
My, my body didn't like being up that high elevation because of the shortage of oxygen.
Somebody else just from Dizer was, oh, Matt Brown, you know Matt?
Yeah, honest, I'll tell you a story, coming back Friday, Friday night into Saturday morning. We stayed at a hotel in Kearney, Nebraska. The next morning, we had to wait an hour, cause there was a line of storms just east of us. We checked out, an hour late. My son says, go give me a glass of pop to, before we go. I walked back, who do I see but Matt Brown?
Yeah, that's crazy.
Yeah, and so.
I didn't get a chance to talk to him last night, but I guess they had a water pump go out under the car.
Their water pump went out, yeah. If he'd have been home, he would've fixed it himself.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. It was hot and late last night, so I, we loaded up and just went home. Usually stand around and have a drink too.
Yeah.
Checked him out. Everybody was, seemed like everything was going good. Couple small things, but I didn't hear anything. Did, uh, change on training? How's that going? How last week? I did, during another level this year. Very good, kind of took market change off, looked at him and then realized certain things in tension and. Sure. So I went through Monday, Tuesday all day. See what they should know, so I know.
Well, yeah.
The funny thing, he told me. Uh, he's on seventy-five classes.
Really?
About guaranteed.
How's your dad going?
Um. Participate, let alone.
Grandkids are here.
It's just a good reminder, first that you saw her day.
We just found it close again.
Yeah, they'll pick apart, you know, different parts and all the different.
You just ruined it out there.
Got a lot of it too.
Boy, I ripped the top off and I'm like. They just slide a piece. Morning Casey.
Here Casey, I'll put it back up.
Thank you, sorry, I, my bad, I apologize.
I tried not to make a comment, but it's hard.
Good morning, mind you guys that Wednesday is the first brief precinct meeting here at nine thirty, the committee you guys appointed will start working.
Wednesday the ninth at nine thirty?
Wednesday the second and nine.
Oh, second and nine?
Yep. We decided to do two weeks, cause I think it might take a little longer since we got more. Supervisor just.
Did you want us to be here?
No, you don't have to, I just wanted you to know what was going on, and then next Monday I have employee years of service on your agenda. I've, I've gotten an email out to all the colleagues and the attorneys, and I'll do it again.
What time is it Wednesday?
Wednesday at nine thirty. But.
Well, it's not necessary.
Yeah, no, it's up to you anyway, it's, I believe, if you wanna come, I just wanted you to know what's happening. Yep, that's too bad.
I'll try to be here, I just, that sounds interesting. Numbers, numbers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We only do it every ten years, well, we're normal here, so.
Yeah, normally.
Are you starting to do it at work on it more?
Yes, um, Marie's kind of my GIS guru. Well, there's census map, maybe use it, you draw things on it and you.
Here and there.
So she and Karen. Karen's in charge of election.
I got you back.
Election precincts, we kind of need to guess where we think supervisor.
He's coming today.
In town or?
In town.
Well, at Gardening?
There's some different scenarios and then the committee can decide.
Story at Gardening.
Supervisor precincts.
And you look at one of the better days.
It's, it's.
Based on supervisor district, maybe this, this is.
So Lindsay and Josh goes on the house. Started gardening, moving stuff and doing trailers.
Cause we can't have a precinct where you're voting on supervisors. Yep.
How long's that stuff, is that, year?
It's, so they take the population and divide it by five, because it's a wide precinct, so you can have plus or minus one percent, which is about thirty-five.
And how many miles?
Yes, yes, the first election, I think two, I'll say. Two years.
I'm sure it's not a. Pretty mulligan.
Well, I don't think they're, they bought a class when the deep died too, so I don't.
And I don't know how it gets picked. I don't know if this, I think the state might do that, cause you're in charge of this.
Would I call for the state to say, hey? I got screwed out in two years of mine, I'd better be a four year.
Legislative services agents.
I would, no. I'm not coming, no. Yeah, see how I get, how far I get.
Well, really, that's what you want, I wouldn't see.
Exactly, yeah. Yours, yours is gonna be one year.
I was at my house last week, calling, I was out there.
I never thought of it, but we were talking earlier, there's quite a few people dropped out, cause the crowd wasn't as big as they anticipated here. A lot of people just dropped out.
We did like chainsaw training. Throw chaps on. Recent, and they wanted to pick a spot.
That and that was probably tough.
I think that, and I understand.
Did you have to agree that we did a listing?
That's pretty right, you know, I mean, you're on the guys that, I don't know, a couple spots, one day up on the hill where we had highest gear.
One day or third, when there was just a little one, or when you got it, it was just, and they didn't last long, it was like, oh.
Great.
Wednesday or Friday was just. Like you could chew on there.
I don't know, I'm like, oh, I went to find a piece of water and I brought it out there. Three days.
I've never. No.
Oh, he's been sick all four years.
But that's what you should do every day, you know?
I used to drink.
I, I wondered when he was gonna do that.
Tried to drink a lot.
Did you get all your texts from?
There were not enough waters.
Did you get texts from your daughter, did you have that?
I mean, we don't get no, uh. USL, uh, USL.
We actually share towers.
But that water doesn't have carbonation.
If everyone else is busy, then you push back.
Is it?
A couple times I was trying to send it, coming down, trying to send something to my sister. One morning. Ended up, I had to shut my phone off. Turn it back on. And then it was able to say.
Yeah, we were making trees go uphill against the wind, I mean, and the second level class is really.
Well, it's pretty good, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
Too bad Fonzie can tell, you know, cause you know Fonzie, too bad he was higher, he would've been.
I mean, he stays the ninety degree turn, but it's more like a hundred and twenty. And when they go down the wall and make the turn.
Rearranging the furniture.
Casey, I saw some signs out there, nice sign.
Thank you.
Getting out there, good for you.
I haven't seen any.
We don't want it.
Just have one in your eye.
He's a hero for Monty. Got it too easy.
Listen Trevor. Laura, listen, we're just here, we got today, we're not.
You guys. No, you're gonna discuss that, uh, because that's the one where we were.
Oh, that's the same, that's the same.
What I get last year, you get hurt last year.
Missed you on Wednesday. Were we just competing?
Um, yeah.
Hey, what are you doing on Tuesday? Afternoon for farmer's markets. Kids are bringing lemonade stands to the farmer's market, so if you wanna come by. Fresh lemonade, fresh squeezed lemonade they bring back. Mom's got a bag of lemon, we're gonna get some.
Good.
I mean, I'd say.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure. I did ask, I asked some folks pretty much twenty-four seven. And we were right there at the intersection, so it's pretty hard to see. There's a guy who says, has one of those, hunting bikes that go on Walmart, he's got eighteen right on his back. What do you think, right? Sitting on his heel. That lady is looking back, it's a whole, whole way.
So anyhow, they won't be.
No, cause a lot of them. Turned time to other places. Is the guy, which Walmart brings up one of these?
Yes, you're so right.
Where is that? Close to World Records.
Under, within the category of under dumb.
He finally said, you know what?
I mean, can you imagine the decade?
I've been out to mom every single day. Every single day. Since my.
I think, I worry about my rear end. The seat hurts mine.
Well, that was gone, it was starting to, so I think if I was my mother, it was probably, I don't know, a person. So, it was so hot, and then we were having a little farm ride right now, on Thursday night. So, we had moved on and like, what, three rooms or something, so the shady part was all. So, she had mowed the front.
She had mowed the front, but then she's like, well, yeah, I'm, I'm really spry, I didn't have to mow. She had me come out and mow for about an hour and a half.
They're younger than we.
Board dress, we, and I went out for dinner, and Lindsay got there, and the kids were there, so I went out on Friday. That was your, 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 I think, I went to their house on Saturday, and I spent all day.
What part of decor is your house?
Um, it's actually a postal address, so it's about nine miles after, I don't know, halfway between Brakes and Decor. Um, one hundred thirty-first street, it's gravel, there's only like, half mile of gravel up there.
Are you sure?
We're still in the car school district. I still, so you know, where nine comes out, one is to decor, and it goes diagonal down and flattened out. Right where it goes, it's like diagonal down, just flattening out, keep going, you turn off on the W highway going south. Instead of turning straight, you stop, you keep going south.
And see, we used to go up there, in the, in the.
Some on the east side of town. Shouldn't be driving. Josh is completely remote, his base stuff at campus. Um, and Lindsay.
They brought us some pies.
Tried to find another bird to sit up.
I didn't try, well, I think by the time they were gonna heal it now.
Put the, what, put the what?
Yeah, people aren't. They're showing themselves as much.